Hello, rise and join me in the pledge allegiance to our flag, followed by the invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You bow with me, please. Dear gracious and heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of living in a free nation and having the privilege and right to speak openly without retribution. We ask, dear Lord, that you be with the families of the servicemen and women that are serving in harm's way today, wrap your loving arms around them and comfort them in their time of need. Dear Lord, be with this governing body as we make decisions that affect our citizens. Give us the wisdom that we need to make the right decisions at the right time. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Ma'am clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilman Striplin.
Here.
Councilman Wood.
Here.
Councilman Argo.
Here.
Councilman Miller.
Here.
Councilman Renninger.
Here.
Councilman Bowles.
Here.
Councilman Fink.
Here.
We'll call the official meeting of the Prattville City Council Tuesday, July 5, 2011, starting at 6:18 PM. The character trait of the month is thriftiness, making the best use of resources. Gentlemen, you should have received copies of the minutes from the public hearing and the city council meeting of June 21, 2011. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman President Protem Fink. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Striplin. Any questions or comments about the minutes? Although those in favor of approving the minutes signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing no opposition, the minutes are approved. This time, we will entertain comments from persons present regarding items on the agenda tonight only. We will also, at the end of our agenda, entertain comments from persons present on any subject pertaining to the city operations, but for right now, it's just for specific agenda items that are on our agenda tonight. Is there anyone who would like to address an agenda item with the council tonight? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Mr. Mayor, do you have a report?
Yes, sir. First off, I have some summer news and to report why our flags were in half staff is because Specialist Nick Hensley gave his life fighting the war on terrorists, so please keep his family in your prayers and so forth. And it's young men like him that's been able to, for us, to enjoy our Fourth of July. And I hope everybody up here had a joyous Fourth of July. It meant a lot to me because everything that the United States has been through since our conception is what it's all about. And without all of that, we could not be here tonight. But moving right on along, and I hope Mrs. Vauld is still here and she can hear me, that if she goes to our city website and clicks on the residence page, we have created a new webpage there that's Be a Good Neighbor. And in it, we talk about witted lots, also about disposal prescription drugs, how the witted lots affect the citizens around us, also the cost that it has to the city and so forth, trying to make people be a good neighbor. The prescription drug disposal and illicit drug disposal on there, it talks also about how that can affect our water table, our water system, our sanitary system, and so forth. But this webpage is created by Teresa Lee, our webmaster, trying to make everybody aware exactly what their actions can be, both positive and negative, around the city. So if she can go to that page and everybody in the city, maybe we all learn a little bit. If you have any comments or anything you want to add to that page, please send them to us, and I'd like to see that page grow because that is one thing that we are a service-oriented business, being the city of Prattville, but it seems like one of the biggest things that we do have to do from time to time is make people be good neighbors. And hopefully this will go a long ways and make our job a little bit easier. Anyway, going on, some good news is our tax receipt numbers we're in for the fiscal month of May, which is our first full month, or our first month of our one cent sales tax increase. I believe I sent a report to everybody on that, but to go back over it, we collected approximately $1.8 million on there, which had about a $62,000 rebate, which left us with $1,761,991.71, which is a 2.22% increase. And over last year, if we were to take out the one penny increase, if we add the complete dollar amount in there with the one penny increase, it's actually a 34% increase. But that one penny increase was designated to debt service, so we have it ready to make, being put aside for our debt service on our $1 million bridge loan. And I think I was informed today that we have already paid $300,000 on that $1 million bridge loan. So I hope that's a little bit of good news there. But there again, I'm glad to see that everybody's made it back from the Fourth of July. We had great fireworks down here, and so far, I've heard nothing but great reviews on it. And I really want to appreciate Mike Renninger. He sat on the fireworks committee that was pulled together, and without that committee and a lot of the citizens that pulled this, pulled together on this and were able to get sponsors to come up with the funding for that, it would have been probably just a wet weekend, but I was glad to see the rain come when it did, and I think everybody had a very, very good time. But as of right now, that's it.
Are there any questions of the mayor? Mayor, let me clarify that the increase is 2.22%.
Yes, sir.
It's not 2.22%.
Okay.
We don't want anybody to...
[laughing]
I mean, I wish it was 22% increase, but it's 2.22%, right?
Yes, sir. I stand corrected on that one.
Did you want to recognize any of your staff that did an outstanding job pulling together the Fourth of July celebration?
We... Thank you. Kelly Cook was unable to make it here tonight, but she really worked extremely hard, just trying to get everything coordinated. She was the coordinator for the whole event, trying to get the police together, the fire department together, cleanup crews. We had quite a few pictures taken of the event, and you can get on our city website and view some of those. And if I'm not mistaken, I think there's even a little video clip of some of it, very finale portion of it.
I can check tomorrow.
It should be on there tomorrow, but we're still trying to get the rain out of it a little bit. But anyway, but everything went really well. She was able to pull everything together. Our World War II veterans that came down, I heard nothing but praising about the whole thing. City Montgomery loaned us a trolley car to be able to move our World War II veterans around, and the Lions Club had a great cookout in the park and so forth, and the veterans enjoyed that also. And I think that Prattville really rolled out the red carpet for them, showed the appreciation that they deserved. And one comment that I did make down at the park was that, or actually at the stadium, was that I had heard last, two, three days ago, that on a news broadcast was that they had done a study of all the patriotic states of America, and Alabama was among the top ones there. And I think it really, everything that was pulled together, I think it really showed it. But there again, the, all our police chief, fire chief, Kelly Cook, just, anyway, all of our departments pulled together really, really well. And to get this through, we had our fire department honor guard out there delivering the colors and so forth. And I felt sorry for them from time to time because the heavy uniforms that they had on, they were marching in the parade, marched all the way down to Pratt Park and presented the colors down there. And then later on that evening, they got wet, and no telling what those wool uniforms weighed, but they were a little bit heavier at the end of the night than they were in the beginning. But the city pulled together really well on that, and it's going to be hard to beat next year, but I'm certain that we will.
Any questions of the mayor? Thank you, ma'am. Oh, Councilman Miller?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, you know, we all know this, I just wanted to reiterate it, but the sales tax, it's good that the proceeds were in the positive column, way in the positive column, but that's a 12-month tax. It's one year, and that in no way, I think, detracts or minimizes the fact that we still have to watch very closely how the city's revenue and expenses are balancing because at the end of the day, we've got to be positioned at the end of the 12 months, hopefully to continue without the sales tax in a stable, you know, I guess sort of a financial situation that's sustainable. So I just want to make sure nobody inadvertently translates that into there's been a big windfall or a big fix or whatever, and kind of keep it in perspective. And I like the rest of the council and you, Mr. Mayor, am delighted that it ended up with this first month being the numbers that you shared with us. The other thing I wanted to ask you about is the, my understanding is the municipal courts amnesty program was launched this month, July?
Yes, sir.
And do we have a projection on, and I know it would be a rough estimate at best, but what that might bring in, or do we need to get some experience with that? Is it too early for me to be asking for that sort of a...
A little premature on that one, yeah. If you can allow us to report on that at the next council meeting, we should be able to have a better report on that, but I just, right now, I'd just be pulling numbers out of a hat on that one.
Yeah.
But, yeah, going back to the sales tax and so forth, I agree. I mean, it's really, really great that we are up, but we are still monitoring every dime, you know, I have put into place a no idling policy, which hopefully will cut down on our fuel usage. One of the reasons that Teresa Lee and myself came up with our Be a Good Neighbor web link is it's just trying to educate everybody exactly what the costs are. I mean, because like we have mentioned up here numerous times, I know you've been a very vocal opponent of this, you know, for, what, 12 years now? Longer than that? Excuse me on that one. But anyway, if everybody knew exactly what it costs for us to just send out all of our notices, they would be really shocked, and eventually, I think, the citizens would probably be a little more demanding of the people who are not abiding by all of our laws on that. So that is one of our little subtle nuances of trying to educate people or bring back awareness of exactly what costs are around the city and so forth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for the mayor? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll get into our reports from our councils on special committees. Councilman Striplin, do you have a report?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Wood?
No.
Councilman Argo?
Yes, sir. There are two items on our agenda this evening, items number two and item number three under the regular agenda that are dealing with replacement of equipment for the wastewater department. Both of these items are budgeted. I've talked with Doug Mosley, a finance director. He indicates to me that the funds are present and available for these two items, and the wastewater committee recommends that these two items be adopted this evening. Also, Mr. President, if you don't mind, I would like to tell you two other things rather quickly regarding items that are related to this. Members of the council, you'll recall that we employed Goodwin Mills and Kaywood to do a study of our infrastructure and equipment of the wastewater department, which will also include a five-year master plan for the department. The other piece of that is that this council approved a $10 surcharge to be added to each bill of a citizen of the city of Prattville, with the understanding that we would eventually do a study of rates and the benefits to the wastewater department and to the city to, whether or not that $10 surcharge was sufficient, or whether it needed to be replaced with a higher rate or a lower rate in the surcharge to be removed. The mayor has contacted, I mean, Jackson Thornton, who did the original study six years ago. They have asked that they, they would like to update that study. The mayor has indicated that he is, that he's in favor of that, and the wastewater committee is also ready to move forward on that as well. I had a conversation today with Terry Mitchell, with Jackson Thornton. They are ready to go, and they believe that they can conduct that study somewhere in the neighborhood of about $17,000 to $18,000, which sounds very expensive, but it's going to require some in-depth analysis of not only the rates within our area, but also within our region and our state, and then also in the southeastern United States. So in the coming days, the wastewater committee will meet with the mayor, we will meet with Mr. Mitchell or his designees, and we will bring a recommendation back to the council a later date. But I did want to give you that heads up now, so to let you know that we are moving in that direction because we did promise the citizens that we would look at that $10 surcharge and decide whether or not that that was appropriate or if it needed to be replaced with a higher or lower rate. So with that, Mr. President, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Argo. Councilman Miller?
No.
Councilman Bowles?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Fink?
Yes, sir.
All right. We'll move into our agenda then. There are four items that can be placed on a consent agenda, and on our agenda front page, you see them listed as on a consent, but it will require council action to do that. The chair will entertain a motion to put items 1 through 4 on a consent agenda at this time.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Fink. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Striplin. Is there any discussion on moving these four items to a consent agenda? All those in favor of moving these four items to a consent agenda signify by raising your right hand, please. All opposition by a like sign. Seeing none, these four items are on a consent agenda. Now, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
It's moved by Councilman Argo. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fink. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor signify by raising your right...
Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Mr. Argo?
Prior to us voting on the consent agenda, I think it would be proper if you were to read the titles of these four so that everyone will know exactly what we're talking about. And I don't know that it's actually required that we do that, but I know that Mr. McDowell in the past has felt more comfortable with us doing a consent agenda if those items were to be read aloud and into the record, so to speak.
I will certainly be glad to do that. Appreciate you pointing that out. On the consent agenda, item one is a resolution to declare various witted lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title 11, Chapter 67 of Code of Alabama, 1975, is amended. Item two is a resolution to accept Bent Tree subdivision, Plat 4, for maintenance. Item three is a resolution to accept Highland Ridge subdivisions, Plats 5 through 12 and 14A, 14B, 17 and 18 for maintenance. And item four is a resolution to set a public hearing to declare various witted lots to be public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, is amended. Those being read, are there any other comments before we vote on the consent agenda? All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda signify by raising your right hand. All opposition by a like sign. I see none. The consent agenda is approved. We will get into our regular agenda items now. Item one is an ordinance to amend Chapter 26, the building, construction and related activities, and 105, fire prevention and protection of the Prattville Code of Ordinances. It was held from our June 21, 2011, meeting. There was a public comment meeting, and we had a public hearing earlier on this. There are some amendments that need to be proposed. Councilman Wood, will you propose the amendments, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. First Amendment, this ordinance needs to be amended as follows. To amend Chapters 26, Fire Prevention and Protection, and 105, Building, Construction and Related Activities of the Prattville Code of Ordinances. The Second Amendment... Can we go ahead and do them all, both of them together, Mr.?
Okay.
The Second Amendment would be amendment to the regular agenda item, page 4, line 59, insert the following. In 1103.2.1, insulation. Supply ducts in attic shall be insulated to a minimum of R6. Effective July 1, 2013, supply ducts located in attic spaces shall be insulated to a minimum of R8. All other ducts shall be insulated to a minimum of R6. Mr. Chair, I so move for these amendments.
Councilman Wood has moved these two amendments to this ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowles. Chair will have to defer to legal. Do we need to suspend the rules on amendment to an ordinance since it's already been introduced? Okay, thank you. Just want to double check. Are any questions or comments about this ordinance is amended? Are there amendments to the ordinance, rather? Councilman Fink?
Okay. I guess the question, Joel, I've got for you, I know we talked about in the public hearing, and I was reading this and apologize we got through, but they're actually asking for the letter from United Heating and Air, is asking for it to be kept at an R4, but the amendment that we're reading is an R6.
Yes, sir.
So there is a little bit of a disconnect between the two documents.
The current code, the 2006 code actually reads R6 at the moment.
Okay.
Does it? Pardon?
I mean, the letter, I mean, it's a compelling argument. I mean, the cost savings is only $17 a year in cost savings. It's going to be about a 40-year payback on it, and there's probably other areas that I'm just... Because the letter, the letter says R4, the amendment says R6.
Sure. I'll tell you our methodology for proposing what we've proposed, and then Dallas will back me up on as far as whether it's eight or six at this point. The idea is to try to stay consistent with the energy codes that are being adopted nationwide and in the state. Basically, these codes are helping to achieve a higher energy efficiency by keeping the amount of heated or cooled air that is lost in the duct system to a minimum, to reduce that. And so we're trying to stay consistent with that. Staying at R6 is trying to keep this from being a larger hit at this point to the industry, but also trying to keep moving in the direction of higher energy efficiency. So we're looking at basically a two-year time period for them to phase in to get to the R8.
Do we know what the financial impact versus R4 to R6? I mean, they're stating that to go from R4 to R8 is anywhere from $600 to $800, which is going to add back in.
Sure.
Is R6, 200 to 300, or is, do we know that number by any chance? I want to understand what the impact is going to be, because, you know, home builders out there are struggling.
Yes, sir.
Right now, and the home building industry as a whole is struggling, and I don't want to place any undue burden on our home builders.
I'm not sure what the difference... Yes, sir. I'm not sure what the difference between R6 and R8 is. The letter, and I misread this earlier, I looked at it very quickly. There's actually, this letter is incorrect. What it's saying here is that regarding a change from R4 to R8, the code that we have adopted right now today requires R8. And it has since we adopted it two years ago. The 2006 IRC requires R8. So we're, after having a meeting with Mr. Smith, matter of fact, and bringing some of the money issues to my attention, what we're doing is dropping what the code currently that we have adopted from R8 down to R6 to get in line with the international, not national, I keep saying international, I'm sorry, the Alabama Residential and Energy Board. That's what they're in the process of adopting now, is the R6. Yes, I'm still correct. Okay. Just making sure I wasn't telling you a lie. That's what the Alabama Board is working on now. We currently have adopted in our city an R8 requirement, so we're backing off that to help them out.
Does that resolve your concerns, Councilman Fink?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Smith, it'd be out of order for me to recognize you right now during our agenda, but the chair does have the authority to make special exceptions. Do you have something to add that might be pertinent?
Yes, the question, what does it cost? I know what it costs. Would you like that?
I thought you might.
I want to come up front and speak with you.
I think it would be good to speak from the microphone because we need to make sure it's recorded.
There, Smith, builder of Prattville. I was really curious myself. What is this going to cost going from R4 to R8? And I was wondering, why are we doing this? And the reason I was given by mechanical engineers were, well, there's some duct loss, about 10% duct loss in the current duct board in the attic, and maybe going from the R4 to R8 will help on that 10% duct loss, but it won't make it zero. It'll still be a percentage somewhere in between. So I just finished a house out in Wayna Vista, 1630 square feet, and I said, run these numbers on this. I already paid for the R4. I said, run it on R8. How much more is it going to cost? Well, I was shocked. It was $1,000 more. Now, to get a small return and to go with the R4 to R8 for $1,000, that's a heck of a hit on the cost of a house for what little benefit. And I agree, that someday we do need to step up and go more. But if you want to know what it costs, that's what it costs. Any questions?
Councilman Bowles?
R6. From R4 to R6, what's your cost?
Well, see, I'm not even sure they make an R6. Have you checked into that? I know, just double the insulation. R4 is one inch, and R8 is going to be, of course, two inches. And I know they talk about, it's on the state level, going with an R6, and hopefully, it will only be $500 and not $1,000, but that is what the costs are. And I ran it on another house, too, that I'm working on now, and it came, it was a much larger house, and it came up around $1,500. So it is a significant cost increase. And the reason I think a lot of the jurisdictions have not been enforcing it, even though it's in the 2006 code, is that it is such a big cost issue in the construction of a house for what perceived little benefit that you get. Any other questions? Thank you for letting me speak on that.
Thank you. Mr. Smith? Any other questions or comments before we vote on the amendments? Councilman Fink?
And it's the will of the council. I was just going to ask if there is some compelling reason why this, I know it's been held. Is there a, is there an issue with potentially holding this for an additional meeting, or is it something that is in dire need of us passing if we held it for one more meeting? Is that going to create any undue...
Who are we referring that question to?
I guess to Joel. Sorry.
Mr. Duke?
Sir, we've never been in a great hurry to get this passed. If it needs more discussion, we'll be glad to do that. You know, we started this with a very open process. You adopted a public hearing resolution a month ago. We had a public information meeting. We put this information out for folks to look at, and even before we got to the point of bringing it to you, we met with Mr. Smith and took many of their ideas in looking at what's being considered for the statewide code. So if there needs to be a little more time to address this question to your satisfaction, I don't think that's a, that the delay will not hurt us.
Councilman Bow?
As a member of the Home Builder Association, I took the privilege of calling Mr. Smith, that is, the president of the Home Builder Association. Originally, he'd asked for us to hold it so he'd have more time to go through it. He was able to go through it and call back and said, everything looks good except for the few points that they fixed and to go ahead and go with it. So I would say, let's just go ahead and go with this, after talking to them, if that's okay with Mr. Smith. Putting you on the spot, Mr. Smith.
May I speak with you again?
Sure. We've already made an exception. We might as well get it all out.
But R4 to R8 is going to be the issue right now. Is it possible just adopt from 2009? Is it possible just adopt the two thousand and nine and hold on that particular part? Is that feasible? Because that's sort of the issue, everyone, because it costs so much.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Duke, do you want to advise us on how we might proceed to do that?
Mr. Chair, go ahead.
Councilman Wood?
Okay. First of all, let me bring concern that Chief Johnson was, and I were discussing, there doesn't seem to be a concern with the fire code. So if you could, at a minimum, adopt that, as far as structurally, how we would take out the, the current standard and amend the international code, I would have to look at that, and if you could give me a few minutes. If you were to...
We would have to look at and see how the, the code is actually written to see how to amend that out. I apologize.
Councilman Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I heard correctly, I believe you all have already stated from the Fire Department that we're operating upon the R eight, and that's a significantly high cost.
Yes, sir.
Right now, so we, and that's, that's on the books, right?
Yes, sir, that's on the books since two thousand, since we adopted the two thousand and six code.
Okay. That's on the book, are the builders using R eight?
Uh, no, that's something we discovered is not happening, so.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I would like to, uh, have this referred back, because we have something on the books that's higher than what they're actually being, that's actually being used right now. So I, I would suggest that this particular amendment be held for further study. We'll deal with what we got on the books and meet with the appropriate people about using what they're supposed to use, or coming up with a solution for R six.
I, I agree, and I would be more than willing to work with the people that are directly affected by this until we can get it resolved so that they can continue to operate without a, a financial hit. And we will, I will gladly come back and readdress this soon, if, if that would simplify things.
Okay, Councilman Wood, are you going to withdraw your amendments?
I withdraw the amendment concerning the insulation.
Okay.
Only.
Well, you introduced the amendments together as a group, you know. So you want to withdraw and introduce the resolution, one resolution that you want?
Well, if that would be simpler, I can do it either way. Withdraw both of them and...
Legal counsel. Mr. McDowell, what would be the most expedient way to do this?
I think you're okay with him just withdrawing, since y'all hadn't voted. He'll just withdraw that second part of it and go with your first part.
Okay. And who seconded that motion? Withdraw that portion of it? Okay. So the amendment before us is what? Would you read it again? Councilman Wood?
The amendment before us would be only to amend chapters twenty-six, Fire Prevention and Protection, and one oh five, Building Construction and Related Activities of the Prattville Coalition Ordinance. There will be no other amendments.
Did you not also amend the title?
That is the title.
That's the title, okay. So that is the only proposed amendment?
That is the only proposal.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowes. Now, the amendment is before us. Any other discussion on this amendment? All those in favor of adopting this amendment to this ordinance signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition, a like sign, seeing none, the amendment is passed. Now, the amended ordinance is before us. Is there any further discussion on the amended ordinance?
Mr. President.
Councilman Argo.
Mr. President, I'm, I'm sort of in a quandary, because we had a recommendation by Mr. Smith to look at the definition of a bed and breakfast, and I quickly jotted down an amendment. However, our rules require that amendments be written. So I guess I'm going to hand you this as a, as a written amendment. May I read it, may I, may I introduce it and then provide it to you?
By all means.
Members of the council, in your packet for the agenda this evening, you only have the top page, but if you'll refer to your public hearing packet, it is page number four under section R two oh two. Definitions, Bed and Breakfast Operation. Mr. President, I make a motion that on the third line of that particular paragraph, after the words historical significance that we add, defined as a structure designated by the Historical Prevention, Prevention, Preservation Commission, or a building located within the boundaries of the historical district. And I make that in a form of a motion.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Okay, the motion to amend as read has been moved by Councilman Argo and seconded by Councilman Wood. Is there any discussion on this proposed amendment?
Call for suspension of the rule.
There's a move, uh, it's been moved that we suspend the rules. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Fink. Any discussion on the move to suspend? All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition, a like sign, seeing none, the rules are suspended and the amendment's before us. Any discussion on the amendment, the proposed amendment? All in favor of the proposed amendment to this ordinance signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition, a like sign, seeing none? The ordinance is amended again. Now, we have the amended ordinance before us. Is there any further discussion on the amended ordinance? All in favor of the amended ordinance signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition, a like sign, seeing none, the amendment passed. Ordinance, uh, excuse me, the ordinance passed. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. You ask for a point of order?
Yes, sir. I'm not sure exactly how we're going to proceed with this, because the amendment that Mr. Wood offered and then withdrew changed what we currently have from R eight to R six. But we've already heard from a, a builder that we are, we are requiring R eight, and there may not even be any such thing as R six. So by with him withdrawing his amendment, we still have not changed what is currently on the books in the City of Prattville, which is R eight. So I'm, I'm, I'm just bringing that up for, for the, the committee that will handle that particular issue and Fire Marshal Johnson, because that, that is still going to be an issue until that is addressed. Thank you, sir, I appreciate the point of...
Yes, sir. Read it. Councilman Wood?
Mr. Chair, just to add to that, and that's the main reason that I pulled it, so that they can be aware that they are operating with something stringent, and if they want to change it, somebody has to get to moving on it. Or they need to come in line with what's on the book.
Any other comments before we move on? All right, we're on to item two on our regular agenda. It's a resolution to request the release of funds not to exceed four thousand three hundred dollars for the replacement of one Cayman conveyor belt for the wastewater department's Ataga Creek plant. Councilman Argo, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, Mr. President. Whereas the City of Prattville Wastewater Department has a need to purchase one replacement conveyor belt, and whereas said belt is available from Cayman at a cost not to exceed four thousand three hundred dollars, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that said funds are hereby approved and appropriated and are to be paid from the fiscal year two thousand and eleven wastewater department line item equipment replacement fund. Mr. President, I so move.
Resolution number two has been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wood. Any discussion on this proposed resolution? Councilman Miller?
What, the language of costs not to exceed forty-three hundred dollars, so is this, is this going to cost forty-three hundred dollars, or what's it going to cost? All right. All right. As a, I guess that's just, as opposed to at a cost of forty-three hundred dollars. I mean, it, okay, that's David McDowellism.
There may be tax, I don't know if it's exactly forty-three hundred, so it may come in a little less, that's why you...
Okay, that's our max. Thank you.
Any other questions? I understand these funds are budgeted, so they do not require suspension of the rules. Okay. All those in favor of resolution number two signify, do you have a question?
I'm ready to vote.
Okay, signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition, a like sign, seeing none, the resolution passes seven oh. Resolution number three is a request to release funds not to exceed three thousand seven hundred dollars for the purchase of one air handler for the wastewater department's Ataga Creek plant. Councilman Strippin, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Whereas the City of Prattville Wastewater Department has a need to purchase one replacement air handler, and whereas said air handler is available from Mays Heating and Air at a cost not to exceed three thousand seven hundred dollars, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that said funds are hereby approved and appropriated, and the air handler is to be paid from the fiscal year two thousand and eleven wastewater department line item equipment replacement fund. So moved, Mr. President?
Councilman Strippin has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Argo. Is there any discussion on this resolution? This once again is budgeted funds and does not require suspension of the rules. All in favor of passing this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition, a like sign? Councilman Fink is abstaining, let the record so show. Resolution passes six oh one. That exhausts our agenda. Is there anything coming from the floor? Any items to come from the floor? This time, we'll open up the floor for any comments from person present, persons present as it relates to the City of Prattville, and does not have to be on the agenda. Is there any business to come before the council from the general public? Yes, sir, please come forward, state your name and your address. I know who you are, but others may not.
I'm Carl Byers, and I live at one thirty-nine Till Street.
Yes, sir.
Most of you come out fourteen, or Fairview, coming on to thirty-one. You know, we've got a bad traffic light right there, especially since that Wonder World over there has got all of that, people flocking over there to get in good shape. When you come out of the parking lot, people don't know whether they're going to turn left or go straight through. Can we get a distance to that light to where it directs us? The one at the hospital does. You know, you come out there, the light turns lit for you to go left, you've got a light, it's clear. Then the other side, it turns, you can go left or straight through, whatever you want to do. We need one at the other intersection up the street just the same way. And, I mean, I know that, I've, I've talked to the people at the Department of Transportation, and they said they'll look at it, and they'll have to have a survey and all of that, and then they'll see about it. But I think if the City Council would get after them, not mean, but I believe we could maybe get it done faster and may save an accident.
Who is the councilman that represents that area? Is that you, Councilman Strippin, or is it someone else?
I think it's mine.
Councilman Bowes?
I have to look at it, it's right there on the edge of mine and Councilman Argo, so it's both of them.
Now, both of you can fight over it. But there's one other thing I want to bring up, too. You know, we talk about our weeds. How many of you went down the Queen Smith Road lately?
I go down there every day.
When you go through the curb down there, in the weeds alongside the road, about waist high?
Right along the right of way?
Mm-hmm. I mean, and I believe that's city right of way.
I'll have to verify that, you may be right, I don't know, but I'll check into it.
Well, I mean, most times city streets have a right of way, don't they?
That's true.
And, you know, it's awful when you start telling me you're going to find me five hundred dollars or, or whatever, because my weeds ain't, my grass is a little high.
Yes, sir.
And then go by there, and it's waist high.
Little, little discrepancy there, isn't it?
Just a little bit, just a little bit.
I will take that in hand and, and check into that, see what can be done.
Okay, and I appreciate it.
Anything else?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Byers is exactly right about the Highway fourteen light at, at Highway thirty-one. If you're on Highway thirty-one, turning left or turning right, depending on which way you're going, you're in a protective turn. But if you are on Highway fourteen, going across into the, into the shopping center, or if you're coming out of the shopping center crossing over, there is not a designated turn lane.
That's right.
So if you're sitting there at the light, and someone on the opposite side does not have on their turn signal, you have no idea until they either turn in front of you, or they'll get into the, the intersection and stop and let you go by, and then they will turn. So he's, he's, he's absolutely correct. That, that, that is a difficult, difficult intersection to navigate. But if you're on thirty-one, you're in a protective turn, so you're okay. But, but you don't have a light to turn, you have to cut across traffic.
Well, now, if you're going, coming out of, like, often sixty-five come down, you've got to protect the light to turn left onto Fairview.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. He's correct.
Any other comments? Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here with us tonight. Is anyone else that like, yes, sir, please come forward. State your name and address, please, and your business.
My name is Carl Hawthorne, seven oh four Emerald Drive. Business, I don't have any business. Are you talking about the subject we're going to be, I want to discuss?
Yes, sir.
Oh, that business I have. I'm going to get back to the tax revenue, and I'm just trying to clarify the tax revenue. Of the one percent additional tax, what is that amount?
What does it represent, the dollar amount?
The one, the one additional percent that was from May, what is that amount collected?
Mayor, do you have those figures? Mr. Mosley, do you have those figures?
Two hundred and twenty dollars.
Four hundred and twenty thousand is the difference, but one percent.
And so that four hundred and twenty thousand, I'm actually asking Doug, but I'll address you, but that four hundred and twenty thousand goes toward the reduction of our debt for the bond, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's what it's designated for.
Then what was budgeted? What's our budgeted amount?
What's our budgeted amount for debt retirement?
For that month, every month, we, I'm sure we have a, we have a, a budget and we have actuals. What is the budget amount? Are we over or under?
I'll refer that to Mr. Mosley.
On debt service? We're right on track of debt service.
He's asking what is, what is the budgeted amount to retire the debt each month? What do we budget each month?
In, in essence, we have so much a year to, that you, you've probably projected for the one percent. What?
How much were we expecting to get?
Exactly. What, versus, actual versus budget?
About two million dollars is what we're...
Two million, so we got four hundred, so that, that was a very good month, therefore, for the one percent. That's what I'm trying to get to, I'm just trying to identify, is this one percent, which we talked about for months, seemed like years, but it, it, it is paying off from the standpoint of our debt service, because that, that's critical for the survival of our city.
Yes, sir. It certainly is paying off.
So, Mayor, you basically saved about two weeks of the one percent by getting the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars reduced from the golf thing, from the LPGA. So congratulations, we picked up another two weeks for, for debt service, so.
Yes, sir, thank you. And actually, the number I finally pulled up here was four hundred and sixty-eight thousand additional dollars there, so. But anyway, we're, we're, we're definitely moving in the right direction and so forth, and, and we were very conservative whenever we were saying two million, because I think it actually is a little bit more than that.
Was that an, was that basically?
Was that an, was that basically evenly split? Or, I mean, some months usually are higher than others. On your budget, is that like $400,000 every month or is it, does it fluctuate?
It fluctuates.
It does fluctuate?
Sales taxes do.
But I just wanted to try to clarify exactly where we were on, on the 1% because there's been a huge amount of discussion within the city and all of us. So, thank you so much.
I appreciate your interest, and thank you. Is anyone else? You know the routine, Laura Lee, so proceed.
Laura Lee Boone, 210 Thorn Lane here in Prattville. Just a quick point of clarification because it's something I don't understand, and I'm interested in the business of the city and how this works. No personal interest. No personal interest whatsoever, just purely curiosity killed the cat, and I didn't want to find y'all after the meeting. Resolution number three, when we asked for money for a new air handler, and I'm not even familiar with what an air handler is, it's obviously something we need to work, the wastewater. It was purchased through Mays. How does the city decide where that comes from? Just curious, is it a bid-type thing? With him abstaining, I'm thinking, you know, the Mays live in his district, and possibly that was affecting why Mr. Fink abstained. And I'm just curious as to how we come about who we buy things from in the city.
Usually, when it reaches a certain limit, we put it out for competitive bids, and we have a list of qualified bidders. And depending on what item you're bidding on, it can be a rather lengthy list. But invitations to bid are sent out to these, these vendors, and they either submit or they don't. Their choice. And then we select the lowest responsible bidder, and that's who gets the business.
Okay. So, there's already a list of some type, and they know, you know, if the city ever needs a part that we can provide, then we can provide a bid for that part. Very interesting. Thank you.
Anything else? Any question? Councilman Fink?
Yeah, and if I can just clarify, the reason for the abstention is that they rent space from my father's establishment. So, they have some warehouse space and an office that they rent from my father. So, out of an abundance of caution, I just simply chose to abstain on that vote, and that's the reason.
Like I said, it's just curiosity, just learning how this works.
Sure. Any other questions for Mrs. Boone?
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else that would like to bring business before the council tonight? Okay, seeing none, no more, rather. Mayor Byer, uh, Mayor Byer, excuse me. Forty in the slip. Mayor Gillespie, do you have any closing comments?
Yes, but not at this time.
I'll pay for that one, nearly. Councilman Strippin?
Very briefly, yes, sir, Mr. President. I would express appreciation to the organizers and participants of the Fourth of July Parade. It was a very nice event. And to those that, citizens of the community that gave time and resources to help raise money for the fireworks, I understand it was one of the best we've had. Thank you.
Councilman Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to say congratulations on a great Fourth of July. And I want to extend a heartfelt thank you to the mayor for allowing the old gentleman to ride along in the parade with you. I appreciate it. You had the candy already supplied, and I took advantage of it. I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Councilman Argo?
No, sir.
Councilman Miller?
No, thank you.
Councilman Bowes?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Fink?
Just a point of privilege to wish Councilman Wood a happy birthday today.
Very good. Happy birthday, Councilman Wood.
Thank you very much. That's why I say old gentleman. Lord has blessed me to be 58 years old today.
He's a baby.
All right. Well, the Chair has no reports, but I would also like to add my congratulations and appreciation to everybody that was involved in the Fourth of July celebration. The day started early and went well into the night, but every moment was a cherished memory for me and I'm sure for the 60-plus WWII veterans that we honored. So, thank you, community, for stepping up as you always do and supporting that effort. Happy birthday, Mr. Wood. If you recall, I did offer to let you ride in the back of the truck with me and my wife, but you declined for a better offer. That being said, our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, July 19, 2011, at 6:00 p.m. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
So moved.